Now in session, I'm Elizabeth Hewlett and today is March 11th, 2021. In this continued pandemic, the Planning Board continues to host virtual hearings and today marks the 40th virtual meeting since March of 2020. We remain committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, our applicants, our stakeholders, and our staff as we continue business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone of the participation guidelines for our hearings. Speaker, pre-registration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits is required. All participants must pre-register and all materials or exhibits, if any, must be submitted by 12 noon on the Tuesday before the Planning Board meeting, as shown on the screen, as announced in our weekly meetings, as posted on our website, and as clearly stated in bold red on our published weekly Planning Board agenda. Registered speakers and presenters may join the meeting with the link provided via the email from the Planning Board. Registered speakers may also listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line, utilizing the call-in number provided via the email. Of course, the public may continue to watch Planning Board meetings streamed live or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form. Please note the screen again for instructions. As always, we'd like to take a moment of silence in honor of the individuals and loved ones in our community and our nation who passed since our last meeting. First of all, we want to remember that we have over 29.6 million cases of COVID-19 in the United States alone. That's what we have had in the past year, 29.6 million cases, more than that, and over 537,350 deaths as of this morning in the United States alone. This is truly a sad pandemic and these are family members, loved ones, friends, grandmas, children, I mean, everyone. And so it has not left anyone untouched, so we want to remember them and their families. Throughout the nation and the world, we want to remember Lawrence Otis Graham, of the attorney and author who examined race and privilege in America, Roger Mudd, age 93, the longtime Washington-based journalist and political correspondent, Mark Pavlich, age 63, the former National Hockey League player who was the star of the 1980 U.S. Olympic hockey team that beat the Soviet Union in an upset known as "The Miracle on Ice." I think that might have been, yeah, "The Miracle on Ice." He was the first and only American to score five goals in an NHL game. Peter Diebler, known as Kane of The Kane Show, a syndicated morning radio show based out of the DC area. Norton Jester, age 91, children's author known for his 1961 classic, "The Phantom Tollbooth." Joe Altobelli, who led the Baltimore Orioles to the 1983 World Series title. Jamil French, only age 29, an actor who appeared in the teen drama series, "Degrassi: The Next Generation." Jeffrey Scott, age 79, the actor who appeared in the TV series Dynasty. David Minst, 89, inventor of tofu tea, a non-dairy ice cream, and launched kosher vegan food products based on tofu. I gotta tell you, that tofu tea was very good. Carla Walenda, age 85, she was a member of The Flying Walendos, a high-wire act. But her father and her husband both died in a walking the wire in such a tragic accident, but she kept performing until her retirement in 2017 at the age of 81. I know I had one more. Lou Ottens, who was the Dutch engineer who invented the cassette tape, one of the most popular music formats of the 70s, 80s, and 90s. So he was age 94, and I'm not going to pass judgment, but there are a lot of people in our viewing and listening audience who will remember the tape cassette. And of course, we extend our deepest sympathy to any of you who may have suffered the loss of a loved one as well. We extend our hearts and our condolences to you. May we have that moment of silence, please? Thank you. Again, it's the month of March. It is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. We want everyone to be cognizant and to be, to make sure that we're equitable and, and focus and make sure that we are, have programs and make sure we have facilities that accommodate everyone. We gotta walk the walk and not just talk the talk. And make sure that our facilities are accessible to everyone and we have programs that benefit everyone in our sphere. It is colorectal cancer awareness month. You know what you need to do. It is one of the most treatable forms of cancer. It is National Ethics Awareness Month. We should focus on ethics every single day. It is National Multiple Sclerosis Education and Awareness Month. It is National Nutrition Month. The Department of Parks and Recreation is putting on many programs all month long for the month of March. You can go to pgparks.com and see, get cooking lessons and tips on having a more nutritious diet. Of course, it is Irish-American Heritage Month and we will have St. Patrick's Day coming up. So we want everyone to celebrate. We celebrate every background, every ethnic group, every, we celebrate all people. So this month it is Irish-American Heritage Month and we honor those of Irish heritage and we wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day as well. And finally, it is Women's History Month. And I will have a little bit of something to say about that. This week it is Girl Scout Week. I don't know how many of you were Girl Scouts. I was. And it is Women of Avi-, oh, there we go, Commissioner Washington. So I was a Brownie and a junior and a cadet. And it is also Women of Aviation Week. So on March 11th, on this day, March 11th, in 1789, African-American astronomer and mathematician Benjamin Madenker and architect Pierre Charles LaFonte began the layout for Washington, DC, our nation's capital. 1850, Women's Medical College of Pennsylvania opened. It was the second female medical school in the United States. 1918 was the first documented case, on this day, March 11th, 1918, was the first documented case of the Spanish Flu, the start of the worldwide pandemic which killed anywhere between 500 and 100 million people. And look what we have now. We needed to learn lessons. And by the way, it was a misnomer, had nothing to do with Spain. 1942, the first deportation train left Paris for Auschwitz concentration camp. Tragic. You know, that whole story was just tragic, plain and simple and wrong. 1986, Otis Redding became the first person ever to receive a posthumous gold medal for his single, I'm gonna look to people who may remember, "Sitting on the Dock of the Bay." He was a powerful, soulful, and stirring singer who died in a plane crash the year before at the tender age of 26. 1971, Jim Morrison, Mr. Mojo Risen of the musical group The Doors, fled to Paris on this day to avoid US jail time. Unfortunately, he died less than four months later, having never returned to the United States. 2018, the movie "The Black Panther" became the fifth Marvel movie to earn $1 billion worldwide. And I know Madam Vice Chair Bailey can tell you all about that. And 2020, one year ago on this very day, COVID-19 was declared a global pandemic by the World Health Organization. At that time of 2020, we had over 121,000 cases worldwide and a little over 4,000 deaths worldwide. And so now we have over 200, I mean, 2,629,000 deaths worldwide. So very tragic. We must continue to be careful to mask up, to socially distance, vaccine or no vaccine, get your vaccine if you can. But you must continue to be vigilant. And finally, today's Women's History tidbit. Lorraine Hansberry was a talented playwright and author who, along with her family, struggled against the inequities of segregation, even challenging the common practice of restrictive covenants which prohibited the sale of homes or land to black folks, African, those of African-American descent. And they took that case all the way up to the United States Supreme Court. Ms. Hansberry authored the play "A Raisin in the Sun", depicting the life of African-Americans in segregated Chicago. The play opened on Broadway on March 11th, 1959, and Ms. Hansberry became the very first black woman to have a play premiere on Broadway. And she won a New York Drama Critics Award, all at the tender age of 29. The title was taken from the poem "Harlem" by poet, activist, and playwright Langston Hughes. His poem said, "What happens to a dream deferred? Does it dry up like a raisin in the sun?" That was, Lorraine Hansberry, and that was our Women's History Month tidbit for the day. We also have planning announcements. The Planning Department invites you to participate in the West Hyattsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan, the Virtual Visioning Workshop, this Saturday, March 13th, 2021, from 10:30 to 12:30 PM. You must register, you can see on the screen, register by March 12th, 2021. Finally, we just, this week, on March 8th, we had International Women's Day, which is in the midst of Women's History Month. We want to celebrate and honor and recognize all the women in our lives, all the women of the world, all the women of the commission, all the women in our viewing and listening audience. I just have to tell you, where would we, first of all, there would be no we for women, for men either, but women have a hard load to carry and typically carry so much and the inequities remain in place there in terms of disparate pay, disparate treatment, disrespect, things of that nature. Uplift the women in your lives. Women uplift other women. We cannot put women down. So please honor and celebrate all the women of the world for Women's History Month and in recognition of International Women's Day. Thank you. And with that, I'm going to go to our agenda. I want to announce first who we have with us right now. We have, we have our full complement of the Planning Board. We have Madam Vice Chair Dorothy Bailey. And we have, okay, we have Commissioner Washington. President, okay, we have Commissioner Dorner. And we have Commissioner Geraldo.
Morning, everybody. Happy Women's History Month.
Thank you. And you know what, while I was saying honor all the women in your lives and in the world today, I do have to give a shout out to the enlightened men who do that regularly, on a regular basis. And we are so fortunate to have such men in the commission as well. So thank, and our two commissioners in particular. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So we also have with us our Chief of Development Review, James Hunt. In the hearing room today, we have our Planning Director, Ms. Andre Checkley. We have our Technical Hearing Writer, Lee Kratka. We have Kenny Flanagan, Senior Planning Technician, running the PowerPoints today and taking care of business. And ever-present, not always visible, we have Ryan Cron, our Visual Media Specialist. I know we have our Planning Board Administrator, Jessica Jones around as well. And we have joining us today our Senior Counsel, Peter Goldsmith.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay. You're just gonna say good morning like that after all this enthusiasm? Okay. Okay. So we welcome everyone here today. And I would like to remind everyone that we thank you and appreciate your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our no-longer-new normal. Let's all remain thankful for our blessings and we ask that you remain, that you remain, that you make every effort to remain kind, stay safe, look out for one another, stay strong, stay resilient, and remain ever-hopeful as we continue striving to get through these times together. Thank you. Okay, our first item on the agenda is the draft minutes from the February 18th and the March 4th Planning Board agendas, which were in fact both heard on March 4th. Is there a motion?
Move or approve them, Madam Chair.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Chair Bailey, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Vice Chair Bailey?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye, Madam Chair.
Okay, because the ayes have it 5-0. The next item is Item 3C. We have Active Transportation Advisory Group. Presentation. Mr. Jackson, are you on? You're muted, you're muted.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, thank you. And Mr. Brian Barnett Woods, are you on as well? There you are. Okay, we see you're muted too somehow, maybe on your end, but.
That's right, thank you.
Okay, there we go. So, okay, so good morning and we look forward to your presentation.
For the record, this is Michael Jackson with the Transportation Planning Section of the Prince George's County Planning Department. Once again, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning about the Active Transportation Advisory Group. Next slide, please. Want to start off first by talking about ATAG's predecessor, the Bicycle Trails Advisory Group. BTAG was first started over 20 years ago as a way of coordinating information and initiatives between the Planning Department and Department of Parks and Recreation, and also to provide citizens with an opportunity to be regularly heard and consulted on bicycle and pedestrian matters. The meetings went on for, as I said, almost 20 years and they ranged from quarterly to semi-annual meetings. When Long Term Staffer Fred Schaefer retired in 2019, he was the staff person, the staff person of BTAG. BTAG went into hiatus. Following discussions on, oh, next slide, please, I'm sorry. Following discussions on resurrecting BTAG, we changed the name to the Active Transportation Advisory Group. And this was due to a focus more on the needs of bicyclists and transportation and we thought that trails would still follow naturally. And we also wanted to raise the profile of bicycling and walking as a transportation mode. The meetings are open to the public. And next slide, please. Similar to BTAG, ATAG is expected to produce similar outcomes. We want to provide that forum for the public to address their concerns to the commission. We see it as an, as an opportunity to exchange ideas that are, and issues that are occurring in the county and beyond. We want to solicit comments about departmental activities, especially the update of the Maryland, I'm sorry, of the Master Plan of Transportation and our regular area transportation plan updates. Next slide, please. ATAG meets quarterly on the first Monday of the month, except for September, which is, which first Monday is Labor Day. We meet in the evenings from 7:00 AM to 8:30. We held our first meeting in December of 2000 and it was in the daytime. Following the suggestion by one of the attendees that we should hold these meetings in the evening, our second meeting on March 1st was an evening meeting and our public participation nearly tripled from about 10 to 12 in December to up to 27 in March. And we, and we received great feedback from, from people and appreciation that, that this advisory group had started again. Next slide, please. Our current updates, well, issues that we are working with include a Bill Kelly memorial trail. Bill Kelly was a longtime Prince George's County resident and a citizen activist who created a legacy of bicycling and walking advocacy, not only in Prince George's County, but throughout the state. Bill's name was the first one on the list of attendees with then-Council Executive Wayne Currie in 1998 that started ATAG. So staff is working through the process of determining how does one go about naming a park facility after a person. We're looking at improving bicycle parking facilities following concerns from citizens that when they ride their bikes to go to, to stores and restaurants and other commercial activities, there's no place for them to park their bicycles and they're having to use ingenuity to find trees or lampposts or such. Now, while we, when we review development cases, we regularly ask for bicycle racks. That doesn't help with existing, with existing businesses that are not undergoing development or redevelopment. So we are, we are looking at ways to try to encourage more bicycle parking at those places. We received an extensive update on park and recreation project, project activities at our March 1st meeting from Robert Patton, the Trails Manager, which held people's interest very well. Next month, Andrea Lasker will, will address the Commissioners on Vision Zero updates. Vision Zero, of course, is the initiative to reduce or eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries. Next slide, please. That sums up our briefing. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to, to address them. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We appreciate the presentation. And I remember Bill Kelly well, so, so very lovely. Let's see if the, Mr. Barnett Woods, were you trying to say something or no? I heard somebody's voice.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. This is Brian Barnett Woods, Transportation Planning Section. Just a quick correction, I noticed on one of the slides it said our meetings go from 7:00 AM to 8:30 PM. While we could certainly talk about the matters for 13 hours, they are 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, let's see if the board has any questions. Have you, Madam Vice Chair? I think she's muted.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington.
No questions. I was just about to point out, Mr. Barnett Woods, I was sure that was an inadvertent typo, so.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Dorner?
No questions. I just want to thank you for the slides and for the briefing. It's good to see all this stuff going behind the scenes and the involvement with the community and the public particularly. Putting the, putting the meetings on the evening times makes it a lot easier for tons of folks. And even, and I know it's maybe not hard or not easy on the staff, but even like kind of the later times make it easy for parents who may have to get their kids down and get them suffering stuff, who want to be involved in community aspects but just can't. So that's really good to see. I also wanted to just point out, sort of slightly mention, with Bob Patton's involvement, this has been an initiative that's been really good with the commission to see both the park side and the planning side working together. I think that's one of the strengths that our commission particularly has, that we have both of those, those departments underneath, the commission is one unit. And it's, it's been really helpful, having people working together on both sides who are strong advocates for pedestrian activity, for biking, for multi-modal kind of transit. So thank you and keep it up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dorner. Commissioner Geraldo?
I just want to thank the staff for all they're doing and I'd like to see a whole lot more going on in the county, making our roads safer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that presentation. We'll look forward to the next one. You said in about a month, we're gonna have another presentation. Is that what you said? So thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. So we're next on our agenda is Item 10, which is the resolution for the University of Maryland Capital Region Medical Center. I don't think we have anyone signed up to speak on that. Let me just double check right here. We just need a motion.
Move or approve them, Madam Chair. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye, Madam Chair.
Thank you, the ayes have it 5-0. Next item on our agenda is Item 5, which will be followed by Items 7 and 8, which are companion cases. Item 5, let's make sure we have everyone. Ms. Butler, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. Mr. Tedesco?
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm present.
Wonderful. Mr. Wilby?
Yes, here, Madam Chairman, good morning. Chair Wilby.
That's okay, that's okay. Sharon Ridley?
Good morning, I am here.
Wonderful. And Mark Ridley?
Yes, I'm here as well.
Wonderful. That concludes the sign-up list. Ms. Butler, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. For the record, my name is Tiara Butler with the Urban Design Section. The project before you is Item Number 5, Detailed Site Plan DSP-20046 for 2914 Westbrook Lane property, which is a limited detailed site plan for a single-family detached dwelling unit in the aviation policy area 3 INM area. Due to the location of the property under the air traffic pattern for Freeway Airport, the property is subject to a detailed site plan to comply with aviation policy regulations in Section 27-548 of the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. This site is located in Prince George's County Planning Area 74A, Council District 6, as identified in the magenta colored area on the map. Next slide, please. The subject property is located on the north side of Westbrook Lane. The boundary is shown on the map, outlined in red. Next slide, please. Subject property is zoned residential agricultural, as shown on the map. Slide, please. This slide shows the property is located in the aviation policy area overlay, identified in orange on the map. The property is located approximately a half a mile south of Freeway Airport. The site is located in the APA 3M area, which is the medium airport inter-turning area. Next slide, please. The aerial photo shows the existing conditions of the property, which contains a vacant wooded site. Next slide, please. This site contains a slope, as shown on the map. Next slide, please. The bird's eye shows the boundary of the property, which is currently wooded. Next slide, please. The slide shows the proposed single-family home with multiple covered decks in the rear, a side three-car garage, a breezeway, and additional one-car garage.
Is this the slide you want?
Yes, this is, yeah, the site plan.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
A 12-foot wide driveway, including a circular turnaround in the front of the house. The site plan for this property is consistent with the APA regulations, given the size, shape, and location of the lot. Next slide, please. This slide shows the architectural elevations. All right, this slide shows the architectural elevations, uh, which proposes a combination of, uh, brick veneer and cultured stone. Um, the design contains multiple, um, roof, uh, cross gables and decorative windows and columns. Uh, next slide, please. This slide, uh, shows the rear elevations, um, which is the same, um, materials referenced in the previous slide. And then, um, this slide also just shows the, um, the basement door. Next slide, please. This slide shows the, uh, right elevation, which shows the materials, um, the same materials as referenced in the previous slides. And then this slide also shows the, uh, carriage-style garage doors. Next slide, please. And, uh, the, this, uh, slide shows the left, uh, elevations, which, um, references the same materials in the previous slides, um, regarding the elevations. Next slide, please. Uh, the remaining slide shows a type-two, uh, tree, uh, conservation plan. Uh, the applicant is requesting a variance for removal of one specimen tree. Um, there are three specimen trees. Uh, one is located on-site, two are located off-site. Um, specimen tree three is located on-site and is rated to be in good condition. And, um, the current design proposes the removal of the tree. A subtitle twenty-five variance application and supportive removal of the specimen tree was submitted. Uh, the tree is located on the northeastern portion of the site and in the area that is proposed for stormwater management facilities. And with that, um, urban design staff, um, recommends the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve detailed site plan DSP dash two zero zero four six and type-two tree conservation plan TCP two dash zero zero one dash two zero two zero twenty-nine fourteen Westbrook, um, Lane property, including a variance for the removal of the specimen tree, um, for Westbrook Lane property, subject to the following conditions, uh, found on page twelve and thirteen of the staff report. And this, uh, concludes, uh, staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Um, let's see if there are any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Washington.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Duana.
No questions. Thank you.
Um, where do you go? Uh, Commissioner Geraldo. You move around on my screen sometimes. Okay. Okay.
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tedesco, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the planning board, for the record, Matthew Tedesco, the law firm of Macamahesey Greenbelt, uh, on behalf of, um, Mr. and Mrs. Mark and Sharon Ridley, as well as Mr. Greg Wilby, uh, Chesapeake Custom Builders. Mr. and Mrs. Ridley are on the line. Uh, they are the owners of this property and the future homeowners of this very exquisite and impressive, uh, home that Chesapeake Custom Builders is proposing to build, um, on Lot twenty-five. Uh, as Ms. Butler indicated, we are here for a limited detailed site plan, uh, because of the property's location within the APA and particularly APA, uh, three M. Um, I want to thank Ms. Butler for her review of this application. It's been, it's been a pleasure working with her on this particular application. Um, we are in full agreement of the staff's recommendations, uh, both its findings and conclude, uh, conditions. We have no request of modifications to conditions. I, I do just want to highlight, uh, a couple of things. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Ridley, who are county residents, do own a business in the county. And, um, this is, uh, a particular concern to them in the sense that this, as you can tell from the plans, this is their blood, sweat, and tears, so to speak, going into this, uh, this home. So they're very anxious for this hopeful approval and for Mr. Wilby and his company to start construction. Uh, the Board of Appeals did grant a variance for this, uh, development site two months ago. And so the last remaining, uh, item needed to pull permits is this detailed site plan. So on behalf of the Ridley's, we are very anxious and hopeful that this will be approved today so they can move forward with the construction. And just the final point, um, it's not dispositive, but I did just want to highlight, um, as the board knows, in November of two thousand and twenty, the board did approve a planning plan and subdivision for the Freeway Airport and its future redevelopment. Uh, there was a condition on that approval that requires the airport to submit a letter from the Maryland Aviation Administration prior to detailed site plan, uh, indicating that the airport will close operations and not be licensed for, um, for those activities. That nevertheless doesn't mitigate or remove the APA that's overlaid this property, uh, but it is a factual, uh, determination in the sense that that airport is, is at least planned not to continue. So with that, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Ridley are on the line. Happy to answer any questions. Mr. Wilby's with us. But other than that, we would submit on the staff report as well as the justification and request your approval.
Um, thank you, Mr. Tedesco, and thank you for, uh, reminding us about the, um, Freeway Airport. It's, it's in your footnote too, on, on page two of your statement of justification. I had a question regarding, um, it's a beautiful home, you know? If only. It's a beautiful home. So I look at slide ten and eleven, and I just had a question more out of curiosity. Ten and twelve, rather. Um, so if you go to slide ten, um, the, the, so it looks like there's a walkway to a, what is, is that a detached, what is that over there to, to the right?
Yes, well, so on the right, so the home has, uh, a three-car garage that is interior to the home. And then there's a detached, uh, carriage-style garage, uh, to the right. It's just.
That was my question. So they're two separate, because I saw on slide, um, twelve, the, the, so on the, on the left, that, so those are the, and so those are the, um, interior garages, and then the other one is a detached, so.
Yes, and you, and you can see that if you go, you could, the detached is to the right, if you move the cursor to the right, to the right, right there. That's the detached. It just.
Oh, I see.
Looks like it's, it's a part, it's actually bumped out just from the angle.
I see. I see. Okay, because I was trying to understand that view, um, given that, the, you know, given that slide ten was the front elevation. So now you, I see that that bumps out. I got it.
Correct.
Okay, so let's see if there's any questions of you at this time. Um, okay, Madam Vice Chair.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Washington.
No questions.
Commissioner Duana.
No question. Yes, this is a beautiful house.
Yes, it is. Uh, Commissioner Geraldo.
No questions. Gorgeous house, though. Nice architecture.
Yes, it is. Um, so, um, Mr. Tedesco, are you saying, uh, the folks are on if, in case we have any questions?
They, they are on. I don't want to foreclose Mr. and Mrs. Ridley's opportunity to be heard, but, um, I'll defer to them if they have any comments or maybe thanks. It sounds like this is going the direction we want. So, uh, but other than that, I have nothing further.
Okay, so let me just say this. Um, um, Ms., uh, um, Mr. and Ms. Ridley, um, we have, um, so we, I was ready to call for a motion, but if you wish to speak, we can, you can speak. Um, then Ms. Ridley, Sharon Ridley.
Um, I have nothing further. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley.
I just say, uh, thank you. I, um, I, I won't be long-winded, but I do want to just say that, uh, I've lived in the county since two thousand and four, um, military, uh, brat. And then I also worked for the government for a better part of thirty years. We own a business down at the National Harbor, and we've become an integral part of the community. And so, uh, this house is the house that, uh, we've decided to live in for the rest of our life, which is saying a lot since I've lived in about ten different locations, several places overseas. So, so anyway, uh, we, we appreciate the consideration and thank you so much for, uh, for taking the time to, uh, to, to work through this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And, um, Gregory Wilby.
Uh, yes, uh, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, I'm Greg Wilby, uh, General Manager of Chesapeake Custom Builders. Uh, we have been, uh, licensed and headquartered in Prince George's County with various companies for, uh, twenty-eight years. Uh, we, uh, probably built over a thousand homes and developed, uh, several hundred lots in that period of time. Uh, one of the things that we've always specialized in is on-your-lot custom homes. Uh, we've built a couple of other homes within this community, and, uh, we absolutely believe that, um, you know, this is the type of housing that is good for the county and good for the residents. And so we're excited to get going and move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Wilby. Um, if, if the board doesn't have any questions, um, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP dash two zero zero four six and TCP two dash zero zero one dash two zero two zero, including a variance for the removal of one specimen tree, um, along with the, uh, conditions as outlined in staff's report.
We have a motion, a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Uh, Madam Vice Chair.
But I.
Commissioner Washington.
I.
Commissioner Duana.
But I.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I, Madam Chair.
The eyes have it, five zero unanimous. Um, enjoy your beautiful new home when it's completed. Thank you. Next, we have I, item seven and eight, which are companion cases. Um, special permit two zero 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 two and detailed site plan two zero zero one three, St. Joseph's House. Um, Mr. Bossy, are you on?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair.
There you are. Mr. Ferguson.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Okay, come on. Um, Samuel LaHood.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. I'm here. Thank you.
Wonderful. Kate Powers. Yes, she's muted. Ms. Powers? Do we look at mute her? Ms. Powers, you have to unmute yourself. We see you that you're on, but you have to unmute yourself. Powers? Okay, we'll, we'll get back, we'll come back to her. Okay. And as a matter of fact, she's representing, uh, we know that she's representing the city of Hyattville. We do have a letter from City, the City of Hyattville, which is on page eighteen of the staff report. So I will then go ahead. Mr. Bossy, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and members of the planning board. Uh, for the record, I am Adam Bossy with the Urban Design Section. Uh, before you this morning are items seven and eight. Uh, these include a special permit, SP two zero 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 two and detailed site plan dash two zero zero one three, both for St. Joseph's House. Uh, these applications propose a four hundred thirty-two square foot addition to an existing single-family dwelling and also propose to add a family daycare use as an accessory use to the existing, uh, residential use of the site. Uh, if we can move on to slide two, please. Uh, this property is located in Planning Area sixty-eight, Council District Two. Slide three, please. Outlined in red, the zero-point-one-acre subject property, uh, is rectangular in shape and located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Oliver Street and Fortieth Avenue. Uh, and this is in the city of Hyattsville. Slide four, please. The site and neighboring properties are in the R fifty-five, one-family detached residential zone, as shown here in yellow. Slide five, please. Uh, identified by this hatch pattern, the entire neighborhood inclusive of our subject property is in the traditional residential neighborhood character area of the Development District Overlay Zone of the two thousand and four Sector Plan and Sectional Map Amendment for the Prince George's County Gateway Arts District. While this property meets the criteria to be exempt from some of the specific development standards of the Development District Overlay Zone, a special permit for the proposed family daycare use is required. Uh, subsequently, the overlay zone then does require a detailed site plan for the review of uses that do require a special permit. Uh, and this is why items seven and eight are under review today. Slide six, please. We see here in this aerial image that the subject site and surrounding properties are part of a well-established neighborhood of single-family detached homes. Slide seven, please. Uh, the topographic map shows the site is a modest changing grade and slopes downhill from north to south. There are no wetlands or, or other similar environmental features, uh, here on the property, but it is located in an area that is mapped with unsafe soils. Uh, so essentially, uh, the Department of Permitting Inspections and Enforcement may require soils report uh, during the building permit review process. Slide eight, please. As shown, the subject site is a few blocks east of Queens Chapel Road, which is shown here in red, uh, and is classified as an arterial roadway. Slide nine, please. Uh, here we have a view of the site from the south, uh, with Oliver Street in the foreground and Fortieth Avenue to the left of the property. Uh, and just keep in mind with these bird's eye view images, the property outline is approximate, and here it is skewed to the east a little bit. Uh, as we'll see in a moment, the applicant is proposing, again, a, a small addition to the south side of the home, uh, that is the port, part of it facing us in this image. Uh, the existing dwelling here was constructed around nineteen thirty-eight, so it does predate the current zoning ordinance. Slide ten, please. Uh, we see here in the proposed site plan, uh, does show the existing home, the northern portion of the site, and the proposed four hundred thirty-two square addition on its south side. As part of the addition project, an existing walkway from the south side of the house to Oliver Street will be removed, and existing access on the west side of the house will be improved. Here, given the development of the existing, or excuse me, here, given the development of the existing home predated the zoning ordinance, it does, does not need to conform with the current requirements, but the proposed addition does. And staff did find through the detailed site plan, uh, that the proposed addition does conform with the applicable requirements of the R fifty-five zone, uh, which we've detailed in finding eight of the staff report. Uh, also in finding a, you'll find, staff has recommended, uh, that the proposed family daycare as an accessory use, uh, is compatible with the, uh, surrounding neighborhood. And further date, uh, in their letter dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the Hyattsville City Council did unanimously vote to support approval of the detailed site plan and special permit. Uh, as Madam Chair mentioned, that letter is included as the last page in your backup material. Slide eleven, please. On this last series of slides, I will take a look at some of the architectural elevations, uh, showing the existing home and the proposed addition. Uh, here we see a view of the right side or the south face of the building, uh, with, with an addition in the foreground. Um, as you'll see in the upcoming slides, the proposed addition is designed to be in character with the existing home. Slide twelve, please. Uh, so this is a view of the existing house, again, with the proposed addition labeled, uh, and this is, uh, the view from the west is if you were looking at it from Fortieth Avenue. Slide thirteen, please. Again, just another view, uh, this time from the east. And slide fourteen, please. And, you know, this is the last architectural drawing, again, looking at that south face of the house with its general floor plan. Uh, this is of the addition above it. Slide fifteen, please. Uh, and just to provide a little bit more perspective, the applicant did include a couple photos of the existing site conditions, uh, where the addition is proposed. And this is, uh, essentially an, an extension of that one-story section of the house that we see here in the image. Uh, also in this image, we see the concrete walkway that is proposed for removal. Uh, can we have the last slide, please? And we just see one more view of the existing one-story section of the house where the addition is proposed to come off that front face of it. Uh, Madam Chair and members of the planning board, as I conclude our staff presentation, I do just want to take a minute to, to thank Mr. Ferguson, uh, as well as staff in our permit section. Uh, they all had to do some extra homework in this case, sorting through some of the technical issues, given the age of the property. Uh, so I do want to thank them for, for that extra, extra help. Uh, regarding item seven, uh, that's the special permit application, staff is pleased to recommend the planning board approve special permit SP two, uh, zero 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 two. Regarding item eight, which is the detailed site plan, DSP two zero zero one three, staff is pleased to recommend to the board, uh, to approve that detailed site plan, subject to the conditions included in the technical staff report. Uh, it is our understanding the applicant does agree with the findings and conditions of the staff report. Uh, that does conclude our presentation, and I'm certainly available to answer any questions. Thank you.
So smooth, Mr. Bossy. Thank you. Okay, let's see if there are any questions of you. Um, Madam Vice Chair.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Washington.
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Bossy, and thank you for being so, um, um, diligent in acknowledging your colleagues. That was very thoughtful.
Mm-hmm. And, um, Commissioner Duana.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Geraldo.
I have no questions, and thank you, Mr. Bossy, for a great presentation.
Okay. Always a smooth landing. Okay, Mr. Ferguson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm really only here to answer any questions, and, uh, I want to thank Mr. Bossy. He's really stealing my line, because I believe he's the one that deserves credit for, um, really, really seamlessly working through the hiccups that inevitably attend a, a, a old lot that inevitably attend a old lot and an old building that's been around since before our zoning ordinance. So really, it's your staff, him, and your permit staff that deserve the credit, not me. Thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to turn up Mr. Lahood. Any comments?
I just wanted to thank you all for your time, and you know, I agree with the staff's presentation and the recommended conditions, and we're happy to answer any, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have. So thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Ms. Powers, were you able to?
Yes. Good morning, Karen Hewlett and members of the planning board. I don't really have that much more to add. As Mr. Bossi had mentioned, on Tuesday, February sixteenth, the Hyattsville City Council voted unanimously in support of this DSP, as well as the issuance of the special permit. The city doesn't anticipate any major construction or operational concerns, and, you know, we feel that the addition of this childcare facility will be very valuable to the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes the sign-up list. We have your letter. Thank you, Ms. Powers. If the board has no questions of anyone at this time, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve SP dash two zero 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 two and DSP two zero zero one three, subject to the all conditions as outlined in staff's report.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey, Madam Vice Chair.
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Vote I.
Commissioner Duwoner?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote I, Madam, vote I, Madam Chair.
The ayes have it, five zero. Thank you very much. The next item we have is item six. It is a preliminary plan of subdivision four dash one seven zero two two, Spirit of God Deliverance Church. Let's make, let's do a check here. Eddie Diaz Campbell?
Present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Majette Parker, we see you.
Present.
Wonderful. Okay, so we have a number of people signed up. I think they're signed up as other, but Mr. Parker, you may correct me if that designation, if you see fit. Victoria Ballastero?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm here as the engineering consultant for the project.
Okay. And Alex Bassnett?
Alex will not be joining us this morning.
Okay. Lana Clement?
Lana will not be joining us this morning.
Okay. Darrell Dreher?
Yes, we're here.
Did I pronounce it correctly?
Done well, yes.
Thank you. And that would be Annette Dreher? Is it Dreher? Okay.
Dreher.
Dreher, thank you. Okay, and Jackie Chandler?
Present. I am the traffic consultant for the project.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Parker, can I assume that they are all proponents then?
That's correct, Madam Chair. They are the part of the able advisors to Spirit of God Deliverance and the applicant themselves, the Dreher's.
Advisors, able advisors, that's a new category for us. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so Mr. Diaz Campbell, you're on.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I am Eddie Diaz Campbell, Senior Planner of the Subdivision Section. Item number six on the agenda is the preliminary plan of subdivision for Spirit of God Deliverance Church, four dash one seven zero two two. The project proposes two parcels and one out parcel for the development of an eighteen thousand one hundred and twelve square foot church. As Mayor of Housekeeping, staff has received two items of additional backup from the applicant, which are received before the noon deadline on March nine. These include the staff report and resolution for CR dash twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-one, which is the December two thousand twenty cycle amendments to the two thousand eighteen water and sewer plan. Next slide, please.
Hold on a second. Mr. Diaz Campbell, are you getting ready to go to the second one? Because you received two items, right? One was, one is the staff report, which is thirty-six pages for CR twenty-two, and the other one was the water and sewer plan?
The first item was the staff report, and the second item was the resolution.
Okay, got it. So we will have them marked and accepted into the record as, well, they're already in the record, but we'll label them applicants exhibit one and applicants exhibit two. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Site is located in the central part of George's County, within Planning Area seventy-eight and Council District Six. Next slide, please. Where specifically, the site is located at the intersection of West Failure Road and Rock Spring Drive, on both sides of Rock Spring Drive. Next slide, please. The zoning map shows that the property is split between the Commercial Shopping Center, or CSC zone, the Rural Residential, or RR zone, and the Residential Medium Development, or RM zone. To the north of the property is West Failure Road, the land in the RR zone and the Light Industrial, or I one zone beyond. Land to the east, west, and southwest is also in the RR zone. Land to the southeast is in the RM zone. Next slide, please. The overlay map shows that the property is located in the Military Installation Overlay Zone, for height and noise. Next slide, please. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently vacant. Surrounding use as visible on the aerial include residential, industrial, and institutional uses to the north of the site, including single-family dwellings and a church, a single-family dwelling on a large parcel to the east, the campus of the Prince George's Community College West Failure Trading Center, to the west and southwest, single-family dwelling south of the site, and to the southeast, the Parkside subdivision, which is still under development. Note that this aerial shows the right-of-way for Rock Spring Drive, but does not show that the road has already been constructed where it abuts the subject site. Aerial also shows Melwood Road passing through the site. That road has been stepped to a cul-de-sac, and now ends just south of the site. Next slide, please. This photo shows another view of the site from an aerial perspective. Next slide, please. Site map shows that the site's topography slopes downward to the south. The easternmost and westernmost parts of the site are wooded, and the plan calls for removal of the trees on the western part of the site. Next slide, please. The master plan right-of-way map shows West Failure Road and Rock Spring Drive, which are master plan collector roads. This PPS proposes a small amount of dedication to West Failure Road on the north side of the site. Next slide, please. The four critical intersections that are to be impacted by the development are shown by the black circles on this slide, and are further described in detail in the staff report. The analysis performed by staff found an inadequacy at the intersection of West Failure Road and Maryland Four, which is the circle nearest the center of this map. Therefore, staff recommends the applicant provide a monetary contribution for the construction of the planned interchange at this intersection through the West Failure Public Facilities Financing and Implementation Program, or PFFIP, as described in Condition Seven of the recommended conditions of approval. If this contribution is made, the development will meet the requirements for transportation adequacy. The Department of Permitting, Inspection, and Enforcement issued comments for this case recommending that certain frontage improvements be made with the project in order to improve site access. These improvements are discussed in finding seven of the technical staff report. The improvements are not necessary to meet SOTL twenty-four adequacy requirements, and therefore cannot be required through the conditions of approval recommended for this PPS. However, DPI will still be able to require these improvements on their own authority, should they and the applicant determine uncertainty they are needed. Next slide, please. A portion of the property is within water and sewer category five, which is the green area on these two maps. This area is outside the appropriate service area of the two thousand eighteen water and sewer plant for approval of a PPS, given that the project proposes to connect and collect water and sewer. The applicant has requested that the category five portion of the property be changed to category four through the December two thousand twenty cycle amendments to water and sewer plan. Category four is considered adequate for approval of a PPS. Though as of this hearing, the district council has not yet acted on the amendments, staff believes there is a reasonable certainty that the applicant will receive the amendment they requested, as discussed in finding nine of the staff report. For this reason, staff is recommending a condition of approval, which would require the applicant to obtain their category change prior to signature approval of the PPS. Next slide, please. The preliminary plan shows two proposed parcels and one out parcel, outlined in red. Existing rights-of-way are shown in blue. At this time, the applicant is proposing that all of their requested square footage be used for a single building on proposed parcel one, which is the larger western parcel. Parcel two, the eastern parcel, will remain undeveloped at this time. The out parcel was originally created by the neighboring Parkside Development, before being conveyed to the applicant. The applicant opted not to consolidate the out parcel into the rest of their property in order to simplify the process of obtaining future development approvals. Under the current zoning, developing parcel one will require a detailed site plan in accordance with the adopted sectional map amendment. Though the out parcel, on the other hand, would require an amendment to the approved comprehensive design plan and approval of a specific design plan in accordance with the requirements for comprehensive design zones. Staff did find that adequate fire, police, and rescue facilities exist to serve the subject site. Next slide, please.
Can we go back to that other slide for a second? Mr. Diaz Campbell, slide eleven? So let me make sure I'm following you. So I know it's interesting, because we have three categories here. And so we have category three for the majority of it, category four, both of which are fine, then category five for that, and that's category five is, is not that out parcel. Is that, what happens if they don't get category? You say that we have a reasonable expectation that the council will approve the category four for that? Parcel right there, right?
Yes, there's a reasonable certainty that the area in green, which is just, just to the, to the left of the cul-de-sac on this slide, will change to category four.
The top part, the top part of the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes.
Okay, the top part of the, okay.
Yeah, so the portion in green that's within the red outline.
That's right, correct, yeah, correct. Okay. Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, and if it, and what happens in the event that the council doesn't approve that?
If the council doesn't approve it, then the applicant would need to remove that area from the preliminary plan subdivision in order to, in order to gain approval of it, or else designate it as an out parcel.
Okay. Okay, I'm just curious. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So for this last slide, it shows the type one tree conservation plan. It's, the application is subject to the Woodland Conservation Ordinance, and this is the TCP one, which has been filed with the application. It shows the subject parcels in red and the right-of-ways in blue. The primary management area is shown outlined in magenta, and the woodland preservation area is shown in green. Specimen trees proposed for removal are shown by the X's. The applicant submit a variance request for removal of these specimen trees. Staff supports this request as described in finding thirteen of the staff report. In conclusion, subdivision and zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve PPS four dash one seven zero two two, Spirit of God to Lawrence Church, as well as TCP one dash zero one nine dash two thousand twenty, and a variance from section twenty-five dash one twenty-two B one G, subjects and conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz Campbell. Can you go, can you, I'm looking, when we reviewed this, we looked at page ten of the staff report regarding the West Failure Public Facilities Financing and Implementation Program. Can you touch on that briefly?
The, the PFFIP?
Yes.
Okay, so the purpose of the PFFIP is to, is to support is to support contribution of the planned interchange at Maryland Four and West Failure Road. The we are asking the applicant to contribute.
Okay, I didn't know who transportation was.
We're asking the applicant to contribute.
Let me, let me, hold on a second, Mr. Diaz Campbell, is transportation on? Because I didn't see who was on for transportation for this one. I, I know I'd sent the information to Mr. Mason, but I know he was off.
Good morning, Madam Chair. For the record, this is Crystal Saunders Hancock.
Okay, thank you.
With the Transportation Planning Section.
Yeah, perfect. Can you, can you just, and I didn't mean to put Mr. Diaz Campbell on this spot. This is more of a transportation issue, because I know the council enacted that resolution in twenty-ten. But just, can you explain that? Because I know that depending on the calculations, that intersection has a level of service either an E or an F, that West, West Failure Road and Route Four. So if you could just elaborate a little bit on that.
Sure. Maryland Four and the Maryland Four intersection, we need a, we need a new interchange along the Maryland Four corridor. And as a result, the PFFIP was implemented so that all developments that provide traffic through the intersection will provide some funding to be able to allow us to get to the point where we can build an interchange in the area.
And there's a, there's a percentage, there's a cost allocation table?
Yes, there's a cost allocation table. What staff does is, through our traffic, the traffic study, it was to determine how many of the trips that the church would take would go through that actual intersection. And as a result, there's a calculation that's done. We just know the number of trips. But DPI is who will calculate the actual costs that the applicant will have to provide to DPI for, for their portion to construct the interchange.
Okay. So on page eleven, the second paragraph says eleven thousand, do we think that's eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine? Is that about right? Is that from?
That is in twenty, I'm sorry to cut you off, but that is in twenty-ten dollars. DPI then does a calculation based on the indexes that they, that they use, and we don't know what the indexes are that they use. And they will, at the time that the applicant, yeah, the time that the applicant requests a permit, they will calculate the actual costs of how much they will be required to pay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Anderson Hancock, and thank you, Mr. Diaz Campbell, for that. So let's see if we have any other, any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Duwoner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. You're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Majette Parker, an attorney with the Law Office of Majette, S. Parker, P.A., here on behalf of the applicant, Spirit of God Deliverance Church. You already will hear, you'll hear from later Annette Dreher and Bishop Darrell Dreher. They have been at this for quite some time. Also, we have signed up as proponents in support of the applicant, our able advisors from Traffic Concepts, Jackie Chandler, our engineering firm, ATCS, Victoria Ballastero, and of course, me. So we are here on behalf of the, this particular preliminary plan of subdivision. I want to compliment your staff throughout this process. They have been extremely helpful in guiding us through and through this very difficult process, as you saw through the slides. This is a complex piece of property. Three different zones, different water and sewer categories. A road that got relocated, that was Melwood, is now Rock Spring Drive, relocated to support Parkside Development, which has been here before, the Planning Commission. And the Dreher's have been at this since two thousand and five, trying to build a church at this location to support the community. But we're very pleased with the, with the staff report. We are in complete agreement with all of the staff recommendations for the conditions of approval. Specifically, Madam Chair, you asked about the water and sewer category change and about reasonable Specifically, Madam Chair, you asked about the water sewer category change and about reasonable certainty. We are very extremely excited about that. In fact, next week on your agenda, the planning board's agenda, you will see part of the county council resolution regarding the water sewer, County Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-one will be before you next week, and we'll be here next week as well in support of it. The county council member is fully in support of this application, as well the water sewer category change, and they are aware that we're here today. Everyone is working, rowing in the same direction to see this church get through this very complicated process. And this is one step of many. We will be back for a detailed site plan as in the conditions. We'll be here for the water sewer category change, as well as just being a good citizen to be here and support. If I may, just defer a moment over to the Dreher's to talk about how excited they are about moving forward with this church.
Okay, that was going to be my question, whether they wanted to speak or whether they were here for questions, but they would like to speak briefly. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we're starting with Darrell Dreher. Who, which one do we want to start with?
I'll start.
Simmons History Month, you know, I could go with Annette Dreher.
You know, I want to go because I want to take the time to salute every woman here that's on this Zoom meeting. And most of all, my lovely wife of thirty-nine years. I think we've come a long ways, or really do think we've come a long ways, but we are pastors, I'm pastor of Spirit of God Deliverance Church, this is the first lady. We've been pastoring this particular ministry over twenty years. And in two thousand, two thousand, we started the ministry, two thousand and four. We bought the property. In two thousand and five, we started actually trying to develop that particular property. So you see that we've been going at it a long time, along with the Parkside Development that took place. We have met with Councilman Dean and the community to try to find a way that we all can come to a great agreement and have a beautiful, beautiful church in the midst of all this development.
Hold on, hold on a second. Thank you, and it looks like you're, it looks like at this point you're getting closer to that. So I'm sorry, it's been a long, arduous process, but you can see this is a complicated piece of property with and the sewer categories, you know, you know, kind of all over the place. But okay, but it was smooth the way you went first to pay homage to women, so okay. And your first, beautiful first lady, I'll say that. Okay, this, this first lady Dreher.
Yes, thank you. When he said Councilman Dean, that shows you how far back when we start. So it's been a long time when they just helped everyone. But I just want to say he's Phil Geraldo, and I want to say thank you for everything that you've done to help us. And I'm pretty sure we will see you again, and you've been a great help. We just want to build this edifice so that we can be a big help and to the community, and that's our goal.
Also, I want to thank our team of workers that have been putting together a traffic study, engineers, Mr. Parker. Thank you, guys, for all you.
Wonderful. So thank you very much, and congratulations on your thirty-nine years. It's going to be a big celebration next year, okay. And so, okay, Mr. Parker, anyone else? Are you good?
We are good. If there are any questions, we have here, as I mentioned earlier, our traffic concepts, Jackie Chandler and the engineer Victoria Balostero. But that's all we have. We are full support, and we ask, we're full support of the staff's recommendations for the conditions, approval with subjective conditions. We're in full support of all the actions, and we ask for your favorable consideration of the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's see if the board has any questions of the able advisors or Mr. Parker. Madam Vice Chair, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington, any questions?
No questions, thank you all.
Commissioner Donner.
No questions, thank you, good luck.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I have no questions, thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve PPS four dash one seven zero two-two TCP one dash zero one nine dash two zero two zero, and variance to section twenty-five dash one two-two B one G, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report.
We have a motion.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a second by Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair.
But I.
Commissioner Washington.
But I.
Commissioner Donner.
I.
And then Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote I, Madam Chair, thank you.
The eyes have it five-zero. You're on your way. Good luck, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a minute? Okay, we're having a technical issue over here, so we're going to take maybe five minutes, is that what you're saying? We're going to take a five-minute break, come back with item nine and then three-eight. Okay, thank you. I see we still have, I'm doing our board, we have a Madam Vice Chair. We have Commissioner Donner, we have Commissioner Geraldo, and I'm sure we, oh, there she is, Commissioner Washington. Okay, and we have our counsel, Peter Goldsmith. And then we have, joining us, we have Daniel Tanna and Howard Berger. Okay, so Mr. Berger, and then we also have some speakers signed up. James Albert, are you present?
Present.
Wonderful. John Peter Thompson.
I believe he is here. I see his name on the list, and I know he told me he was able to get in, but.
I think he needs to unmute. We've unmuted him here. He needs to unmute on his end. But okay, we'll come back to him. And Lisa Davidson.
I'm present, thank you.
Wonderful, and that concludes the sign-up list. So Mr. Tanner, Mr. Berger, who wants to start out?
Well, if it's okay with Howard, I've, I have, and if the board pleases, I have a brief presentation with some background on the program as it was laid out in the staff memo, so I can do that, okay? So, thank you very much. On April eighth, two thousand and eight, the Prince George's County Council approved Council Bill zero zero three dash two thousand and eight DR two, the legislation enabling the Prince George's County Historic Property Grant Program. This program provides grants to nonprofit organizations or foundations, political subdivisions, and individuals for the purpose of acquiring, preserving, restoring, or rehabilitating historic properties in accordance with the Maryland Land Use Article Sections twenty-six dash one oh one to twenty-six dash one oh seven. The Prince George's County Planning Board adopted the program guidelines on May eighth, two thousand and eight, and the Planning Board revised the guidelines on July twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. The program was reauthorized in the FY two thousand and twenty-one budget with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in available funds. A thirteenth round of the program was announced in July, two thousand and twenty. And four virtual workshops were held for applicants in August and September. And then all four workshops were hosted on the countywide planning division's GoToMeeting platform. And there was also a recording made of the August twenty-fourth workshop and presentation, which was uploaded to the Planning Department's website for people who were not able to attend any of the workshops live. We also mailed out advertising for the two thousand and twenty-one program year to all of the property owners in historic districts, all owners of historic sites and resources, and to the county's twenty-seven municipalities. A total of twenty-five people attended all four workshops. So if I could have the next slide, please. Thank you. Fourteen applications were received and compiled, or fourteen eligible applications, rather, were received and compiled by Planning Department staff totaling six hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars in requested grant funds for the FY two thousand and twenty-one program year. There was one application that was received and was determined to be ineligible for grant consideration due to an outstanding Historic Preservation Commission violation. So the total requested funds from eligible applicants, as shown here, was five hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars. In accordance with the grant program guidelines, a grant committee consisting of four HPC members and three Planning Department staff members was appointed by the HPC chairman to review applications and provide award recommendations to the HPC. The committee evaluated and scored the proposed projects using the selection criteria in the program guidelines and made award recommendations accordingly. The committee chose to review their recommendations for a second time after the discovery of a technical error in Excel functions following their initial grant meeting. To ensure the accuracy of the final scores and recommendations of the grant committee, the committee met a second time with corrected preliminary scoring data and revised the recommendations accordingly to ensure adherence to the Planning Board-approved program guidelines and criteria. The Historic Preservation Commission, or HPC, reviewed the applications and determined their award recommendations at its meeting of February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If I could have the next slide, please. I just really wanted to briefly show everyone the criteria used to score the applications in this year's cohort. Again, these are included in the approved planning board guidelines for the program. And there are a total of one hundred points possibly available to applicants. The first forty potential points are related to the subject historic property. Please note that the criteria shaded in tan do not correspond to any specific questions in the application, and the two criteria outlined in red are pre-filled by staff based on the location of the applicant properties. The remaining sixty potential points are related to the proposed grant-funded project and project management. And then if I could have the next slide, please. This is just a map illustrating the geographic distribution of the applications that were received this year's grant cycle. So I also have, I guess I can go through the applicants that were submitted individually. But then the next slide that I'm going to show you just shows the HPC scores and recommendations. So if I could have that one up, that would be great. Thank you. So this is, this is what the HPC came up with at their meeting. They upheld the grant committee's revised scores based on the corrected data. And because eligible grant requests exceeded the available funds by two hundred eleven thousand dollars and seventy, sorry, two hundred eleven thousand dollars, seven hundred seventy-three. As a result, the grant committee had to utilize strategic reductions in recommended funding in order to increase the total number of properties that were recommended to receive funds and to try to direct funds to proposed work that most exemplifies the purpose of the grant program. The table presented here provides detailed funding recommendations from the HPC. And, yeah, so I can go through if you guys would like to see. Basically, this is a summary slide for each application that was submitted this year.
You can keep going, that's good.
Okay, so this is the Teed House requesting forty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars to install a permeable driveway to prevent water infiltration to the foundation of the house from the driveway, to install a new concrete floor in the garage, replace the garage roof and gutters, install roof trusses to stabilize the garage, replace the garage floor, and insulate the garage, and repair the original stone steps and walkway. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is the Burgess House requesting forty thousand, ninety dollars to do a second phase of historic window restoration. So this would fund the restoration of sixteen additional windows after their last grant from two years ago that restored the first thirteen. And it would also include the installation of storm windows and painting of trim. Next. This is thirty-two fifteen Perry Street in Mount Rainier. They are applying for fifty thousand dollars for wood window restoration, exterior drainage and regrading to help prevent basement flooding, air sealing and attic insulation, and a mini-split HVAC unit for the second floor of the house. Next slide, please. This is the Wormley House requesting fifty thousand dollars to repair the foundation. Next slide, please. This is the Boydin House, or rather, a barn at the Boydin House, which is requesting forty-three thousand, six hundred fifty dollars for the restoration of this outbuilding, and namely, its in-kind replacement or repair of the vertical board cladding of the barn and replacement of the entry door, which you can see there is a, is a modern door. Next slide, please. This is Grace United Methodist Church requesting twelve thousand, thirty-four dollars to replace, to replace the HVAC system, both the heating and cooling elements of it. Next slide, please. This is the Lewis Brown House requesting interior drywall work, hydrostatic drain pipe and landscaping to improve drainage, refinish the wood floors on the first and second levels, replace the roof, update the electrical plumbing and HVAC systems. Next slide, please. This is Pleasant Prospect requesting fifty thousand dollars for entry door restoration, window and fascia restoration, and installation of gutters and downspouts in the kitchen wing and hyphen. Next slide, please. This is Mulliken's Delight requesting forty-five thousand, fifty-one dollars for the repair and correction of foundation water damage and repair of exterior trim and siding, and then cleaning and painting of the exterior trim and siding. Next slide, please. This is Claggett House at Cool Spring Manor requesting fifty thousand dollars for door jamb restoration, plaster and stucco on the upper floor walls, the installation of lower floor subflooring and flooring, including a lower floor brick floor, and the reconstruction of an interior staircase, which is missing, but there is evidence for where it would be located. Next slide, please. Fourteen five zero four Main Street in Upper Marlboro requesting fifty thousand dollars for waterproofing of the foundation, installation of basement drainage system, replacement of sewage line, restoration of wood floors, replacement of chimney boots, and limited replacement of slate shingles, repointing of firebox, repair of the chimney, and replacement windows, which I believe, actually, that the vinyl is incorrect. I believe they are metal windows. Next slide, please. This is St. John's Broad Creek requesting twenty-six thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars for the repair of interior plaster around fenestration, cleaning of biological growth from exterior masonry, removal of improper caulking of masonry joints and repointing of those joints. And they also applied for the replacement of interior light fixtures to appear more historically appropriate, but that element of their proposal was not recommended for funding. Next slide, please. This is Ashland Hay Barn requesting forty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars for structural repairs to the north and south bearing walls of the barn and the repair or replacement, if necessary, of four exterior doors, and the repair or in-kind replacement, if necessary, of exterior cladding. Next slide, please. Oh, okay, so now I'm back. That was the last application, so I'm back at the HPC scoring and recommendations here. So this is the HPC's detailed funding again, based off of the grant subcommittee's recommendations and scoring. And as to the regarding potential reallocations, the HPC recommends that in the event an award is refused or contract is terminated, that available funds be reallocated to the next highest-scoring partially-funded project, except for those projects where recommended funding was intentionally reduced to exclude disallowed work until the project is fully funded or the funds are exhausted, whichever comes first. And so this table again recommends, is there detailed recommendations? And staff is here today to request that the Planning Board determine the final award decisions for the FY two thousand and twenty-one funding year of the Historic Property Grant Program. And this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tanner. I appreciate it. Let's see if the board has any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair.
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Donner.
So thanks for the presentation, really good. These houses are Can you just go over the ones that did not get full funding? Partial funding, so the Teed House downward in your list. Can you go over what was the reasoning briefly for the lack of full funding? If you're limited by budget, like without that, sort of like taking into account why they received lower funding?
Okay, so there actually were pretty thoughtful reasons for all of these. So for the Teed House, I don't know if you recall from the slide. I, if it's possible to go back to slide number six, that would show the Teed House slide. A lot of the, I'll wait for it to catch up. Sorry, I think it's slide number six, the one right, yes, that's the one. Thank you very much. So a lot of the work was focused on this garage outbuilding here, which is the photos on the upper right, and then the bottom two photos are all of the garage. And so the grant committee, when they met, you know, it was a very good application, and you know, there's nothing wrong with the work, but when they sort of got down to that point where the funding was sort of being used up and they wanted to spread it out, they decided that, you know, to focus on the main house instead of the garage. to focus on the main house instead of the garage outbuilding, they would fund the work that was related to the repair of the original stone steps and walkway, which is a really, you can't really see it super well in this photo. But in the, in the photo to the far left, that walkway that leads up to the house is actually, it's this beautiful stone work, and there are fossils in some of the stones. And so they're going to have a mason come and actually deconstruct a lot of that and rebuild it with the original stones and matching mortar, which is just a really kind of red meat historic preservation type work. So they wanted to fund that. And then they also funded the driveway to protect the foundation of the house because obviously, that's, that's pretty important overall to the, to the main structure. And then they reduced the funding by the amount of the work that was going to be spent on the garage, thinking that, you know, this applicant could either pursue other funding for that portion of it or come back in a subsequent grant here to address that after doing, you know, after focusing on the main house, which allowed them to spread some money down to the following properties. St. John's Broad Creek, which is slide number, let's see here, 17. That was the one I noted that part of the project that they had applied for was this interior light fixtures. And I guess the issue is that the current light fixtures that they have in the church are not, you know, they don't look like a church from this period. So they're very sort of contemporary light fixtures. And they, they thought that as part of their application, they would seek to get something that, in their view, is, is more historically accurate. And I think the grant committee, again, you know, thought that from what they requested, if they focused on really this, this sort of more historic preservation-focused work items, which includes this exterior masonry repair and cleaning and, you know, in some interior plaster work where it's cracked around windows and doors, that that would be a really good source of, or sorry, good use of the grant funds, rather. Whereas, you know, buying, upgrading the interior lighting maybe wasn't as necessary to the overall health of the building. So they reduced that award by the amount of that, of those interior light fixtures, I believe. And then for the one after that, which is Grace United Methodist Church, they are, they are fully funded because it was a small ask. And I believe for the Wormley House, I think that was largely dictated by just simply the fact that at that point, the funding had been sort of depleted. So, you know, being able to spread it from the prior to got that, that property funded to a somewhat meaningful level, though not fully funded. So that's, that's, I guess, the best kind of answer I can explain to how the, how the money sort of trickled down from that point to, like I said, try to spread it out as much as possible while still giving people some meaningful amount that they can use based on the budgets that they had submitted.
Good, thanks. That was really helpful. I was missing in pointing out the Claggett House, too. I don't, because that was, I think they asked for $50,000.
Yes. Oh, sorry about that. Yes, you're absolutely right. Yes, and they were recommended for 35. That is slide number, you might get there before I do. Thank you very much. So a lot of the work on this property as well, you can see, is sort of focused on the interior this time around. This, this property has been with the, has been sort of taking, participating in the grant program for a number of years. And it's a very dramatic transformation from when the property sort of came into the program to now. But now the exterior is largely completed. So, you know, some of this work, like that staircase that they're rebuilding, they, they have documentary evidence of exactly where it was. So some of that work was being funded, whereas I think one of the line items, basically, the, the number that it was reduced by corresponded to certain line items in the budget that were more focused on interior work. And since there's less public benefit to that type of work, I think they, the grant committee sort of made a strategic decision again to spread it out to helping other structures that might be applying this year in, in a way that's perhaps more in line with the purposes of the program. Not that interior work can't be eligible, but just that, you know, that, that money at other properties might do a little bit more to the overall preservation of the structure.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
Sure.
And that's it in my question.
Okay. And then Commissioner Geraldo.
I don't have any questions, but I do agree with the analysis that was just made with respect to the properties that, that did not get fully funded since what, what it seems to be doing, we're trying to preserve the main structure on the exterior. So thank you for that. Thank you for those explanations.
Of course.
Okay. Let's go to Mr. Albert.
Hello. I'm James Albert. Amy and I own Mullikin's Delight. Mullikin's Delight is one of the oldest homes in the country, built in 1698. This year, we're looking to pursue an extensive restoration of two basements and exterior. We've, we've been working with the Historic Preservation Committee for almost 10 years now. And Margaret Hall, this is, Mullikin's Delight was a wedding gift to Margaret and Frank Hall back in 1960. We were not as fortunate to receive it as a wedding gift. We were married on the site here. Margaret Hall died in 2019. And her sister Irene stopped through two years ago. And she was able to give us a few decades worth of pictures from the 70s and 80s. And we were, we submitted our historic area work permit for the basement and exterior work just yesterday to try and get an advance on, on the schedule if, if the award is approved. And seeing those pictures, we got, we got a number of pictures, newspaper clippings, chain of deed, and even an iron bench that used to sit here from, from her. And we'll, we'll also look to provide some landscaping and beautification and hardscaping that brings it back to the, to when she, when Margaret Hall lived here. And I just want to thank you guys for your time to, to present and be a representative of the Preservation Committee. And thank you to the planning board.
Thank you. And so therefore, you're definitely in agreement with the recommendation at this time, right?
I'm in favor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. John Peter Thompson, were you able to unmute?
I, thank you, Madam Chairman and Commission. I'm still lost in the 19th century trying to get into the 21st century, and it takes me a while to find all the magic.
No worry.
I actually have nothing prepared to say. I'm in full support of this. And I'm here in case you had questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We'll, we'll see if there are any questions or maybe we can just get to a motion. Let's see, let's, I'm here from Ms. Davidson at this point. And thank you for the work that you do. Ms. Davidson.
Good morning. Hi. I'm actually serving right now as Vice Chair of the Commission. So I'm here with my colleague, Chair Thompson, just in case you have questions. And I have my full support for this program. And thank you all for funding it. I think it's a tremendous opportunity to really provide financial support to all the dedicated property owners and stewards in our, in our county. And, you know, it's, it's a wonderful program. And I always have served on the committee and need to thank our Historic Preservation Section staff, who always do just a great job helping owners with their applications and providing such clear information and direction to us and pulling this all together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for your work with the Historic Preservation Commission, but also Ms. Davidson for your work on the committee as well. So we deeply appreciate it. I'm not seeing any hands raised from the, from the commissioners at this time. If you have some questions, let me know. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendations of staff as well as the HPC and approve the 2021 grant recipients as outlined in the report and presentation.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion from Commissioner Washington. And we have a second from Commissioner Geraldo, who beat Vice Chair Bailey to the punch this time. Okay. He was on it. Okay. Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye and grateful.
Okay. Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Donner.
But I'm, just for anyone else who's, who's listening in, one of the things that their commission does after the fact is goes back with the applicants and provides feedback on their applications and encourages folks to apply again next year. So I know there's like one, the Cochran store, that was ineligible. And there's some that didn't receive full funding. So please don't take this as being dismissive of your properties or ranking them any lower in priority, which have limited funds. But we're committed to continuing to help you with these properties and these gems that are throughout our county.
Thank you. And Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye. Thank you.
Okay. The ayes have it 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Tanna. Thank you, Mr. Berger.
Thanks very much.
Great, great work. And thank you, Historic Preservation Commission. And finally, Ms. Hightower, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am on. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. For the record, Reina Hightower, Intergovernmental Affairs Coordinator. I apologize if you're getting feedback. I'm not sure why. I want to quickly go through three quick bills with you. CB 13, 2021, the bill adds a definition for farm brewery and permits the use in the OS zone under certain specific requirements. Staff believes this is a good bill for agritourism in the county. Staff would like to recommend a few amendments to the bill. Remove the current language regarding parking and add revised standards to the parking and loading regulations. Staff has included the revised standards in our comments that you may see in the staff report. We also ask that signed regulations be added to the bill. Staff recommends that the planning board vote to support CB 13, 2021 with the above-mentioned amendments. Thank you.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
We have a motion from Commissioner Washington.
I'll happily second that.
Okay. Thank you. Second by Commissioner Donner. Madam Vice Chair. Okay. Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Donner.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye.
Okay. The ayes have it 4-0. Next.
CB 14 amends the commercial table of uses to permit townhouses in the CSC zone under certain circumstances. Staff has several comments and recommendations on this bill. We are asking that letter E under footnote 85 be deleted because bedroom percentages apply to multifamily developments and not townhouses. We're asking that letter F under the footnote be clarified because it is not clear by the regulations whether the intent is to develop multifamily dwellings or townhouses. There are no development regulations for townhouses in the bill. We mentioned recommending adding townhouse development regulations that are currently in the RIT or the MXT zone if the district council should want to add development regulations. Staff recommends that the planning board vote to oppose CB 14, 2021 as drafted.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval and would just ask that Ms. Hightower, as I'm sure she is, working with the bill drafters to maybe get this in better shape.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And, okay, so Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Donner.
Vote aye. And also just remind them about the zoning ordinance that's coming up. Let it take a back and turn this kind of stuff.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye. And I share in the comments of Commissioner Donner.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Ms. Hightower, 16.
Yes. The, the last bill amends the criteria for granting zoning appeals variances in the zoning ordinance. Staff has several concerns because this bill significantly limits the conditions under which a zoning, excuse me, under which a variance can be granted. The bill permits variances to only situations where a property has exceptional, narrowness, shallowness, shape, or exceptional topographic conditions. Current law permits consideration of other exceptional conditions like environmental issues, historic significance, and other subsurface issues. The bill also requires unique or unusual conditions to be, that are different from surrounding properties. This language could prohibit homeowners in older communities from qualifying for variances.
I thank you so much.
Because there are a number of other issues. Thank you.
I am with you 1,000%. And I move that we support your recommendation to oppose this bill.
Second.
We have a motion. And we have a second by, a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Donner.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
The ayes have it 4-0. So now, thank you, Ms. Hightower. Appreciate it. Mr. Hunt, is there any additional business to come before the Prince George's County Planning Board today?
Before 12 noon, there are no additional items before the board today. Thank you.
That's what I'm talking about. Okay. Planning Board is adjourned. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone, because it'll occur before our next planning board meeting.